Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for March 7, 2017. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here.
We've requested that Father Chris Chomek from St. Peter Damien Catholic Church do our invocation this evening. Father Chomek? Am I pronouncing that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let us together pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. The Bible invites us to pray for those who govern us. Therefore, God, the Holy Spirit, we humbly pray that you will lead us and guide us in the course of this meeting. Holy Spirit, send upon those who govern us your gifts of wisdom, and right judgment, and prudence. Help us to do your will. May everything we think, and say, and do be pleasing to you. And we pray through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Chomek.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item this evening is our consent agenda. Consent agenda are all listed with an asterisk. There'll be noted there's no discussion on all items that are approved on the consent agenda. Hearing that, would anybody like to add something to the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. If there's no objection, I'd like to add Item C2 to the consent agenda. It's delegate and alternate to IRMA.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd like to add, oh, I'm sorry, D1, under license and ordinance, the open burn permit request from Sunrise Lake.
All right.
Mr. President, I'd like to add Item A1, the amplifier permit administrative approval.
So we don't have to see those again? Thank you.
And, Mr. President, I would like to add F1, Kohler Fields Bartlett Little League Storage Shed.
All right. Your phone rings while we're in session. That means you buy everybody pizza, so whoever that is. All right, so with that heard, I will entertain a motion to approve the, to amend the consent agenda to include the following: the minutes, board minutes from February 21, 2017, the bills list from March 7, 2017. We'll be adding, under Planning and Zoning Committee, the amplifier permit administrative approval. A1 also will be adding to the consent, or including in this consent agenda will be the janitorial services agreement extension. We'll be adding to the consent agenda C2, under Finance and Golf Committee, delegate and alternate to Irma, IRMA. Also will be adding to the consent agenda, under License and Ordnance Committee, D1, open burn permit request for Sunrise Lake. Also will be adding to the consent agenda, under Public Works Committee, for Chairman Cammer, the Kohler Fields Bartlett Little League Storage Shed. I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Carbonero. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erns?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Erns?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. We have no Treasurers' report this evening. We heard from our Treasurer earlier in the committee of the hall. Next item we have is our President's Report this evening. We have one item that isn't necessarily addressed on the agenda, but it's just Village Board recognition. And I think it's important for everyone to know that our Bartlett Public Works employees, Matt McKee and Tyler Reese, along with the wood chipper, we saw pictures of that, I think, in the paper, were sent to assist the town of Naplet, Illinois, with his cleanup efforts following the tornado damage sustained there on Tuesday, February 28. Are they in the audience tonight? If you guys stand up, we'd like to recognize you. Thank you for going down there. Would you like to share anything about what you saw, or what you did, or no pressure?
Public development.
Yeah?
Program down there. They're pretty nice and consistent place. Definitely something to continue.
Well, we appreciate you representing us and your efforts down there. Thank you so much. Those of you who don't know, Naplet is east of Peoria, near Ottawa. And Bartlett is a part of the Public Works Mutual Aid Network, and that's why these two gentlemen went down to represent us in response to natural disasters and tornadoes. Hopefully, we don't have to use that very often, but we're very proud that you went down there. Thank you. Next on the agenda we have this evening is appointment for two members to the Economic Development Commission. The first appointment will be for Mr. Joe LaPorte. Joe's been a resident in Bartlett since 1977. He is self-employed, specializing in marketing. He attended the University of Illinois at Chicago, Bachelor of Science degree in marketing and minor in entrepreneurial studies. And we won't use any dates on here for Joe, but he's been in the village for a really long time. Joe, if you can stand up, we just thank you for your service. He was appointed to the Economic Development Commission. If there is no objections.
You would make a motion to appoint?
I'll make a motion.
And should have a motion to consent to that appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joe as a member of the Economic Development Commission.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. We can call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That appointment carries. Congratulations, Joe. We appreciate your service. Next, we have another person we're going to, gentlemen, we're going to appoint to the Economic Development Commission. I don't believe he is here. Russell Martino, I've been recommended to be appointed to the Economic Development Commission. He spent commercial at Continental Electric for 23 years prior to his current job. Projects ranging from $5 million to $100 million. He's worked with clients such as United Airlines, CVS, Microsoft, Equinix, and so on. He's very involved in design development and construction. So I will entertain a motion to appoint.
You're going to appoint?
I'll appoint Russell Martino to the Economic Development Commission.
So moved. Now there, you moved to consent to the appointment.
I, you want?
Getting very technical on us here, right?
I would move to.
Consent.
Consent to the appointment.
Consent to the appointment.
Then.
Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Danny. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erns?
Yes.
And I thank them both for their willingness to step up and serve on the Economic Development Commission, and they get a meeting already next week. So, thank you. Next item we have this evening is questions for the board. Does anyone have any questions from staff at this time? Had a whole hour earlier to do that.
I would like to ask Todd, who his writer was for your presentation. It was awesome, especially the comedy parts.
You know, Paul, I may have something that, kind of in a roundabout way, just drew my attention. In our email that we get from our lobbyist, it made some comment about the state furthering gaming laws of some sort. Is there any way we could find out more about that? I could talk to you about it later. I'm just curious if, you know, I've always thought that when it comes to the video gaming, that there would be a point in time where the state would say, hey, five machines worked great, why don't we have 10, why don't we have 15? And I don't know if that's what they were implying or not, but I read it, and I thought maybe we should be somewhat proactive in knowing what's going on before all of a sudden we're hit with something like that.
Okay. Anything else? Next item we have this evening is our Town Hall meeting. Just to be certain this evening, if there's a multiple number of people that are going to be speaking, we are going to restrict the time to three minutes, so try to keep your time at the podium to three minutes. And Lorna said she's going to hammer, she's going to smackdown, or whatever, at three minutes, so. But at this time, if anybody would like to address the board, please step up to the podium. Make sure you state your name and your address, so the clerk can get that down.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lanusa. I live at 1324 North Gate Drive. I'm a Bartlett resident for almost 30 years. I'm at the Willen Hill South Division. Before that, my parents moved here in '69 when I was just a little kid, so basically, I've been living here a really long time. And my input here is that over the last three or four years, I've picked up and drove my son to the train station in Bartlett here. I can't tell you the numerous, countless times where I get to the train station, and I'm hearing the intercom, "Your train's going to be on Number One Main, or your track's going to be on Number Two Main." Does anybody know what Number One, Number Two Main is in here? I bet a lot of people don't. Well, the problem is, most of the commuters up there don't know. They're either on the phone, they're texting, or they've got the iPod on. By the time the headlight comes, it's too late. They're running down to the gates, and it's too late to run across the tracks. Either you're going to get a ticket, or you're going to get hit. This happens all the time, all right? I mean, I'm not saying every time, but I've been going on and seeing this for quite a while. The separated platform is a nuisance. First of all, I am not a Metro spokesperson, and I'm not speaking for Metro, but I do work for Metro. And we got countless delays because of handicapped people, the ADA with wheelchairs, and at their Bartlett train station, and the train's going on Number One Main going eastbound, which is actually the westbound track, they don't got time to wheel themselves over. And it's not Metro's responsibility to pick them up, only if they're on the right side. So you should really take consideration to move the platform in the future before someone actually gets killed. I am their unofficial company photographer. I'm up in town all the time. TL knows me for the last 40 years. I shoot pictures for the company. I've seen a lot of accidents. I'm up there picking up my son about two months ago, when it was one of the very few cold days, and there was two people at the train station, they're on the wrong side of the tracks. They, once they realized their westbound train was on Number One Main, which is the westbound track, they ran from the train station, all the way to the gates, barely got hit. My grandson and I almost saw them get hit. Train dumped the air, sand came all over the place. Engineer Andy Cavina and the conductor refused to let them on the train. They almost got killed. And that's because they don't know what side to go on. People just don't know. So, you know, when you guys built this, there was no merge between the CP rail and the EJNE and the Canadian National. Now they got a yard out there, which they block trains almost 20 hours a day. So if there's a freight train sitting on Number One Main or Two Main, they run the commuters on different tracks. And there's really no time for people to walk down from the train station, almost a block away, to get on a different track. So I'm just letting you know that something you'd be considered as taking, you don't need studies and spend all that money. You can just go up there on a daily basis and see what happens. It, you know, I wouldn't waste your money on that. I witness this all the time. And like I say, I'm not speaking for Metro, and I'm speaking as a, as basically a person who lives in town here and is concerned. And it's great that our trustee, Vince Carbonero, over the years, I read about in the papers, that he's actually got the train station to stay open until like 10:15, and my time is up. So basically, people stay warm in there, and if it's too late, they don't get out in time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Our biggest challenge here is Metro.
I would just like to make one comment. I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer, but I can tell you definitively that this board is discussing, and staff is discussing, and have discussed that train station. I don't know what the resolve will be, but it is an ongoing discussion that we are having about that train station.
Thank you for being here. Yeah, we'll have more, we'll have more power with Metro, the more people that really are disappointed by that, so. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? State your name and address for the record.
As many times as I've come up here, it'd get easier, but it really doesn't. Jennifer Rasmussen, 361 South Hickory. I just wanted to address a couple of issues that came up at the ZBA meeting last month about the bee and chicken ordinance changes. One of the concerns that the board addressed was, what do you do when a chicken is sick? And the other one is, what do you do when they die? And that I didn't have an answer for at the time. So I actually did a quick search of Google, and there are quite a few animal hospitals and veterinarians in the area that can handle sick chickens and will take care of disposing of the dead chickens. Army Trail Animal Hospital is one, and Northwest Exotic Veterinary Clinic in Streamwood. I called both of them just to be sure. The ZBA also questioned what was to stop people from having more than the allotted number, you know, that would be provided in the ordinance. I just would think that as with other ordinance violations, we would have a stipulation that if someone, it would be a complaint. And then the person would be fined or ticketed or whatever accordingly. And they also brought up the 100-square-foot maximum coop size that was proposed with only four hens, that they'd probably be about half of that size. I have a copy of the Wakanda ordinance where they actually restrict the height to six feet from the ground to the top, so it's not going to be this grandiose structure that I think they were kind of concerned about being an eyesore, things like that. So most people who want to do this, to raise these chickens, they almost treat them like pets. They're very well cared for and provided for. They want to make sure structures are nice, and so I don't see that really being an issue. And lastly, as of right now, no municipality that has passed an ordinance has had a problem that they reversed it. You know, Elgin is an example of, they did a study, and it's been such a positive experience for their community, that I really think it could do well here. That's it. I think it's even shorter than the last one.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think we all have chicken police if they have too many, so. Anybody else? She can't be young enough to talk yet.
No, not legibly, anyway.
Old enough.
I'm Jessica Grauman. I'm from 964.
You can bend that down if you want.
Sure. I'm Jessica Grauman. I'm from 964 Cuyahoga. And I just wanted to say that I really would like to see a chicken ordinance passed. I mean, obviously with regulations, and from what I've seen, they seem like very good regulations, so. Want to come out? Just say I was for it. Short and sweet. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hi, my name is Nathaniel Bowman. And sorry, I'm dressing in sportswear. I have a basketball game to go to at the Bartlett Park District in about 30 minutes. But I live at 139 Cedar Field Drive here in Bartlett. My wife and I are both teachers, and I'm here to support the backyard chicken ordinance. There's several teachers at our school that have chickens in their backyard. One lives in Geneva. The other one lives further west, I think in the Burlington area or Hampshire. I know St. Charles has passed an ordinance, or it's been a while. I'm pretty sure Batavia has as well. I think either Carroll Stream, one of those suburbs further that way has passed, Elgin has passed. So I guess if they figured out how to take care of backyard chickens, I would hope that we would be able to as well here in Bartlett. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to. I think that it would be something, it would be great. I think my daughter's been asking me for two years now, and I'm very hopeful that we would be able to pass something. We've been working with the Kershaw family pretty closely. They own the farm on Sterns Road, close to the Home Depot. And I think the movement for people to kind of get back in touch with nature and back with the land is something that's very, very important. And in fact, I don't know if you saw it on the news, but yesterday in Tennessee, they found the bird flu, and they're killing over 73,000 chickens in Tennessee because of the disease that they're trying to avoid from spreading to other states. And most of that is due to the fact that the mega farms aren't able to care for their chickens as well as small farmers are able to. And that, I think that's the intention of most people, is to really do a good job of taking care of the animals that they have, as was said before, as a pet. And I don't think anyone would ever buy, you know, chickens, or any animal, with the intention to, of, you know, not taking good care of them. So I'm here to show my support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathaniel.
Hello. My name is Jill Henrich. I'm a junior at Bartlett High School. I live on 449 Wood Hollow Lane. And I would just like to say and support the chicken community. I'm in 4H, and I currently have a cow, and I enter competitions over the summer. And I would love the opportunity to have a chicken to do the same thing. So, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Natalie Henrich. I live at 449 Wood Hollow Lane. That was my daughter, Jill. And I'm just here to support the backyard chicken movement. And as far as, I don't know if anybody knows how much 4H knows about the organization, but they are very detailed of what they do in their projects. And she mentioned she has a cow, but my cow, our cow, is in Harvard, Illinois. So we drive almost an hour. I fortunately know this family, so that's how we do the 4H with the cow. Obviously, I can't have one in the city. But the chickens would be great. And, you know, from what I've read about them, they do have their own personalities like any animal does. And it's a hands-on, gives you back-to-nature responsibility. Things that I've read about them, between bug control, you know, they eat food scraps. I mean, they're very much part of your family. So, and again, I don't see why, the people who want these are very, I think, very serious, and they love nature, they love animals. And I just read that they actually are becoming comfort birds, which was very interesting. So I'm here to represent. And I enjoy forest trails having their chickens ride in Bartlett, plus a horse farm. How cool is that? So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Fazio. I live on 229 Eastern Avenue. It's me again. So I've been to the most town meetings I've ever have because of this.
You don't get into medals.
Huh?
We don't hand out medals.
Ah, okay. I wasn't going to come in the chicken suit, but I thought that was inappropriate.
You'd get a medal for that.
Okay. Next time. Hopefully, there won't be a next time. But, again, I support the chicken ordinance. And also, a couple of things I wanted to point out is, I know Jen is awesome, and she's a great leader for this ordinance, and I'd like to say thank you for leading us and making me more of a political participant in our village, so thank you. And I feel like if we do have this ordinance, to have like a class hosted here in Village Hall, or, you know, anywhere, about raising chickens, so the people that do get the permits are more educated than just, you know, going right into it. I doubt anyone is just going to go right into it if they're fighting for this ordinance. But just to make sure, I feel like I'm kind of volunteering, Jennifer, but I would help her also, to just educate those people that do want the chickens. And also, the town meetings that I've been to, there has not been one person opposing the chicken ordinance. It has always been people here, physically, emailing, or calling for the chickens. And I think that speaks for itself. So I have faith and trust in you guys representing Bartlett the best you can. Thanks.
Thank you, Laura. I really would have liked to seen the chicken suit, too.
Hi, my name's Lisa Dorringsfeld, and I live at 138 Northeastern Avenue in Bartlett.
What's your name?
We have Lisa Dorringsfeld. We have three young boys, and I think it would be really nice for them to see where our food comes from. We try to source our food well, and I think that's becoming a lot more popular now, and just, you know, buying organic and that. To be able to see from start to finish, you know, teach them where eggs come from. And I think as well, you know, it would make a nice pet for them. My husband's allergic to dogs.
That's one we haven't heard yet.
Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, I'd really like to see it. And I think our plot size might be a little bit too small for getting them, but I'd certainly like to see our friends who want to have them be able to do that. I'm really here to support them and see that the ordinance would be passed.
Good evening. I'm Michael Kennedy. My wife and I, we reside at 214 Southwestern, and we own multiple other properties here in town that we have for investments. We're both longtime Bartlett residents, and we're just here to show our support. We feel that this would be something positive. People would like to have their own food source, and we just want to say that we're behind it, and hopefully you guys can see it, see it to pass it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is it like an extra ploy, they bring their cute babies up here as a, right? Yeah, it works, it works. Going once, going twice, all right. Moving along to our standing committee reports this evening. And for those of you in the audience that were waiting for discussion on chickens, it should be, it'll be in the committee of the hall meeting. It's not, oh, yeah, bees and chickens, so this should go pretty fast. Standing committee reports, first standing committee report under Planning and Zoning Committee is Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item was on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item under standing committee reports is under the Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have under Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Danny.
Mr. President, the two items we had on the agenda were covered under consent.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. Next item under standing committee reports is License and Ordnance Committee, Chairman Erns.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our one and only item was covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Erns. Next item is under standing committee reports is the Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no open items on my committee tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, under standing committee reports, Public Works Committee, Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of our items was put on the consent agenda this evening, and the second one, I would like to ask our Public Works Director to speak on briefly, because I just want to emphasize that I think it entails a bit of a reduction in the rate. Is that right? And so maybe you could explain what's going on with this. This is our electricity purchase agreement.
Do the shortened version of electric rates.
Right.
Thank you, Trustee Cammer. Yes, we're at a point where electric rates are low right now, so according to our advisor, she advised us that we should go out to bid since our contracts expire at the end of this year. And right now, the prices look like they are lower. However, and you'll, through the information, they don't lock in those prices. You have to pretty much get the bid and lock it in right then. So we will go probably tomorrow and look at getting official bids, but that's why we put in that not-to-exceed price, which would be a savings overall for us.
So there should be a savings, the rate should come down.
Assuming the market hasn't changed since we.
We just wanted to emphasize that, so that people know we are fighting to get rates down as anywhere we can. All right, then I would move the Village Board to approve Resolution 2017 dash.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two. A resolution approving of the purchase of electricity by the Village of Bartlett at a price not to exceed .053 KWH kilowatt per hour, I'm guessing.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Danny. Is there any discussion? The question I have, do they run this out more decimal points? Because there's so many, like, thousands of thousands and thousands of kilowatts. so many, like thousands of thousands and thousands of kilowatts. I'm sure it goes out more decimal points. And then when you bid it, you get it at that particular... How far out do they go? Not, not that it's real important, but...
I, it, I don't know how many it actually goes. I think it's like four or five at least, though. But it goes out the ways.
If it's five, five, 5.3 cents, then maybe no. But if it's 5.287...
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing done. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbinero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. President, that's all we have up under public works this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cameron. Next item this evening is new business. Is there any new business that anyone has to get to the order?
I just have one thing I'd like to add. I would like to thank all the people that spoke this evening. Definitely, you got, you did a great job. No one was chicken. And you brought, you really brought a flock of people out with you. And no one was pecking around. And hearing all this this evening.
Why did we start with this, Ray? We could, we could have added some humor to the finance meeting.
I feel a little henpecked. So that's all I have.
Oh, digress. Any, any other, any other real new business?
Comments?
Yeah, we're down to question and answer.
I'd like to, neither question nor answer. Oh, yeah. Who has not been to the fish fry at Bartlett Hills? Show of hands. If you've not been to that fish fry, you must go. Take your kids. It's very, very family friendly, but it is the best fish fry in Bartlett. And the service is good, the food is good, and you see a lot of your friends and neighbors there. So go on out to Bartlett Hills for that fish fry. And Paul, where's...
I think he left. I think he paid, he paid you to say that, so he took off.
Paul, if you will please let Paul know, if he ever stops getting that walleye, I'll, I'll take out and add in the paper.
That's a good, a good point. Anything else? I would just add note, I was out at a couple of the new developments. For those that don't know, we do have our first Kane County residence in Bartlett in the history of Bartlett. They should get a prize or something. But William Ryan Homes is opening up on Naperville Road now, so they had a grand opening. And if you have anyone that you know that's interested in new construction, we have two locations now in Bartlett. So have them check it out. They're really nice places. And it's kind of our job to promote these new construction spots. So get more people in, building permits up, even though Todd underrated the building. Sandbagger. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Hopkins, seconded by Trustee Daney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbinero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.